Everyone here tonight, I'll ask the clerk to announce the meeting and to call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, July 24th, 5:00 PM regarding a budget workshop. Roll call. Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Townsend?
Here.
McCurnan?
Here.
Muggia? Maddox? Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Holland?
Here. All right, thank you very much. We have, today's budget workshop is starting off with Chief Judge Lamson, who I see has brought some friends, and we have Parks and Moing. We're going to try not to get down in the weeds too far. Some corrected budget documents, some budget, review budget action items, and again, identifying topics for future budget sessions. So, we're going to start off with Chief Judge Lamson. Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you, thank you. Mayor, Commissioners, it's good to come back.
And I need you to talk directly into the microphone for all of our listeners out.
I'll be in trouble then. Well, I wanted to thank you all for giving us a chance to make a few comments. This really came about from a recent population control meeting, or committee meeting that we had, and it was discussed. I think most Commissioners McCurnan and Commissioners Walters were there, it seems like, at that meeting. And we kind of thought that we ought to come back and ask to address you as kind of a follow-up to the presentation that we made this last February. And I have really picked out two different topics, and I've had a chance to visit with both the Sheriff and Mr. Gorman about what we want to tell you. And there really are two things that we have some concerns about, that they don't appear to be in the current budget, proposed budget, and we think they ought to at least be considered to be in the 15 budget. And the first one is, back in February, we suggested to you that we need to enhance our pre-trial house arrest department. First, take it out and make it a standalone department, and secondly, at that time, we suggested some different positions, and that those positions, if added, would be able to impact the jail population to the tune of about a quarter of a million dollars per year. Now, we're kind of backing off on our recommendations. We know that you have an austere budget in many respects, but there is one position that we suggested, this expediter or coordinator position, that we really think you should strongly consider adding. That is a position, currently Brenda Liker is performing those functions in large part, and she does a great job with much of that. But she really has a lot on her plate. She's also the head of that department, or oversees that department. We think that by adding an additional person, whether or not you make it an assistant to her, or a different title, we haven't given you the dollars, because I'm not sure I know the dollars. We suggested $50,000 apiece, then, I'm not sure that that's a fair figure for that particular position. There's going to be a little startup cost, a computer, et cetera, but this person works with really all the different departments of the criminal justice system, the sheriff's office, the DA, courts, municipal courts, probation, just to make sure that everybody stays in touch. And I don't know the exact numbers, but I would suggest that she'll save you that position currently, and I say she, because Brenda being in it, $100,000 plus a year will be the savings. It's not going to cost you that much to have that, that position. And we think that if you to leave it out, or at least not to consider it until, well, by the proposed budget until 2016, you're just spending additional monies for farm-out costs, because they're not going to go away. They're not going to stop. The next one, the other position, the other thing, and you may have this in your budget, but my review and in talking with the sheriff, as well as Mr. Gorman, we don't think you do. And that is, for our study, to consider moving the juvenile facility to a different location. I know that Commissioner Walters has had a meeting about this, and you may have it built into the administrator's budget or some other location, but if you do, you haven't told any of us, which maybe not a problem, but if you're not going to consider this study until 2016, you're just kicking the can farther down the road, because, and that's all you're doing. You're not stopping any costs. Those farm-out costs will continue to be at where they're at, or even larger. And so, we've talked about before, back in February, that if we move the juvenile facility, we could have adults in that facility. You could possibly eliminate farm-out costs. So, we felt that it was appropriate for those, even if you make a determination that you can't fund that, or you won't fund that for whatever reasons, we felt that it was our obligation, at least to bring it to your attention again, in that regard. There was one other issue that's not on either slides, and I hadn't talked to either one of these guys about, but I, it was prompted by the fact that I had three leaks in my courthouse today. One in my courtroom.
Is it political leaks or water leaks?
Water leaks.
Okay.
I have a stain the size of your car in my, top of my tiles in my courtroom. And I'm not here to say anything other than this. We have, by the proposed budgets, eliminated, or proposing that we eliminate, capital improvement budgets in all the departments. And I understand that there's a number of reasons that you need to do that, and I can appreciate that, but if we do not use our public building commission and come up with a plan at some point in time to continue to maintain the courthouse, it's going to fall down around us. It may not fall down in my life, but it will in my son's. And as far as I can tell, and since I've been the chief since 2009, the only money that we've really put into that building in large part was through one of the departments, either the court's budget, or the DA's budget, or perhaps Tom Wiss's budget, one of the departments. And so, if we're not, we created the public building commission, I think, two years ago, or perhaps three Commissioners, and to my knowledge, the only thing that we've done with it is buy some radios, and I'm sure that we needed a million dollar worth of radios. I'm not questioning that, but that doesn't help my courthouse get any better too much. So, I'm just throwing that out as a concern. I know it's maybe not be able to be done this year, but at some point, you need to take a hard look of taking the floor by floor of the old courthouse and building each floor up as we go. I mean, it was built in 1926, so it's, and I don't think any of us can disagree, it's probably one of the historical buildings in this community. So, if we lose that, because we don't maintain it, that would be a tragedy to all of us, I think. So, I'm raising that as a concern, just because I have your ear at this point in time. I didn't, I don't know what the other, I had talked with both Sheriff and Mr. Gorman. I don't know whether there's any questions you might have for any of us. We thought we wanted to kind of keep it short as far as these two proposals on the jail, because some of the others that we talked about in February are more long-term. They're going to require a lot more staff, and I'll let the sheriff handle that himself. But, so, if you have any questions, me, I would be happy to try to tell you why I'm here.
Commissioner Kane?
Oh, I was tracking with you, Judge. Clear up until you did the radio thing. Oh, boy. And I know we're on TV, so that radio, they were needed. There's, maybe you can ask later why, but it was much needed, and nor did we want to buy it, but it was a have-to-buy type of thing. But, you know, I did exactly what I said. I was going to tour the jail. I did that, and I toured the DA's office the other day, which, by the way, Jerry's paint got any better?
It's done. It's complete. Looks very good.
But it took, it took a long time for that to come around. But, you know, they talked about that case, expediter person. And I haven't even talked to these guys. I've talked to some of the people who work for them, and that's what they were saying. They were, they were one person away from being a little bit better off. And the reason I bring that up is because we're not having, spending the money on a survey, so instead of spending that money on a survey, we could spend a portion of that money to fill that job. So, that's just my thoughts on that.
Commissioner Philbrook?
So, you have a water leak. So, are we, is the water leak from leaky pipes, or from a leaky roof?
Well.
I'm just asking.
If it's history, it's because the air conditioner condensers on top have, have clogged and it's backing up, but I could be wrong. I understand we're having someone that's a whole lot smarter than me come look, I believe, tomorrow to see whether or not, what the cause of that is. But I can tell you where the water's going, Commissioner.
Well, I'm asking where it's coming from, because that has to do with how much it's going to cost to take care of the problem. That's why I'm asking. I know it may sound kind of silly to get really down into the bushes that low to find out what's going on, but if it's difference between putting on a whole new roof, or just taking care of an issue with drainage from the condensation, that's two entirely different money amounts, so that's why I'm asking. Okay?
And I can't answer you to fund the exact dollar.
I imagine Don can at some point in time. All right.
They're looking into it.
Yeah.
I'd probably rather holistically approach that, because I think that's where the Chief Judge is coming from with the point, that our approach, and it's one I've tried to convey to all of you, with the way we've cut back our capital budget and our projects budget, is we are not going out and fixing things we know we're going to have problems with. We're waiting till they break, because we don't have the money to go fix everything we believe we have a problem with. We're waiting till it breaks, and then we go identify it and repair it. It is not an efficient way to do it. It costs more on that per-item basis, but it's cheaper on the annual basis. So, and we wait, we see a boiler that's old, it's ready to go, we wait, and when it goes out, I don't give the facilities department the funding to go and replace everything they need to replace. That's the issue. We'll, we'll fix this leak, but the Chief Judge knows that a month from now, he'll probably have another one. And then we'll figure out what that is and go fix it. So, our methodology is not how we want it to be, but until we identify and plug money on an annual basis to go after these things, that's how we're handling it.
Commissioner Walker, and then McCurnan.
I like the judge's expression about kicking it down, down the road, because this jail and juvenile issue just didn't happen. It's, it's been around for years, and I've, I've seen, as all of you have, successive commissions kick that can down the road, because they don't want to deal with the cost of it. We need more jail space. I don't think anybody can argue with that. We need more juvenile space separated out from, and what I'd like to see us do in this budget, is find a way to do a study, put it on the capital improvement project, if that's the appropriate location, and have a plan so that two, three, four years down the road, we are in a position to begin construction of new jail facilities, whether it's minimal security and juvenile on two sides of one building, or however that works out to be the best and most efficient. We can't just keep kicking this can, and we're not going to solve it with, you know, all this sales tax money that's going to supposedly come our way. It's just not going to be the solution to all the problems of the city. So, a structured approach over time is a reasonable approach, but we, we're not doing anything. And every year, we hear the same numbers of how many, a million plus or two million that we spend on farm-outs. They'd make a pretty hefty bond payment, or dent in a bond payment for that. And not to mention the reduction in costs that it, you know, the transport back and forth from, you know, I mean, you can do so much with a video, but every so often, the inmate has a right to be in the courtroom. And so, you got to go fetch him, you got to bring him back, got to take him back, and those costs add up, in manpower and gasoline wear and tear. On the other, I think that the addition of those personnel is a reasonable request. It would have been a reasonable request last year, in February, now, and, and any time in the future. And, you know, once in a while, you got, you got to take things on you don't like, and do what you have to do to make them happen. So, one, I favor the study. I would like to see the administrator's office develop a, a plan to put into place a long, long-term, whether it's under the public building commission authority, or our own authority, about additional jail capacity, minimal security capacity, and juvenile separation of the inmates. And there was one other thing, you know, I don't know how the, the public building commission would approach the renovation or the preservation of the, of the courthouse. But again, it's not something that we're going to bite off all in one year and do, but again, we have nothing in place to do it at all, and fixing it when it's broke, I mean, how many times over the years have, has the district attorney's office been flooded with sewage from the inmates on a day of frolic? Half a dozen, 10 maybe?
Well, more than that. Couple of dozen.
This year.
Yeah, half a dozen probably times this year.
I mean, this is ridiculous. And, and we're, you know, I'm part of it. We just simply have to do some things that we don't want to do. And I'm, I'm in favor of doing those things. Now, I will be again next year and the year after that, and we'll see if I'm around after that.
McCurnan, and then Townsend.
Townsend.
I'm telling you, I have to look first before I speak.
Well, I certainly do favor the study, and I had thought that we had said that we were going to put that in this year, because I had commented at one of our commission meetings that I'd like to see it in the amended 14, because as you, as the judge said, the longer we wait to start it, the longer we wait to get the results, which just puts implementation even further down the road. So, 15, I think would be great. I know we've talked with a couple of people about how that might be done by a third party. I thought we were developing a plan to move.
I think it's in there.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I apologize. I identified it in my presentation, and in the book, as Public Safety Operations Study, and I said, police, fire, and sheriff. The sheriff one is regarding the jail space, which encompasses both, you have to do the totalt and juvenile together. So, we've, but it's in 2015. It's not in 2014.
But that's better than 2016, so I like that. That's excellent. Regarding the position, I know that we talked about that, and I wasn't here when you did your presentation in February, so I, I don't remember what happened exactly that night, and I may have misremembered. I thought we had talked about postponing that position until we got the study back, just to see where that position fell in the total recommendations from the third-party study. However, I think Commissioner Kane has hit on a great idea, that if we can identify spending a little and saving more, if we've already built the cost of that survey into our current draft budget, then the fact that we have postponed that could allow that money to be reallocated, and if you believe that it will save us more than we'll spend, or if at least there's a good chance it will save us more than we'll spend, I would support redirecting that money there.
Commissioner Townsend?
Well, thank you. Commissioner McCurnan addressed the question that I had. My recollection was that when these gentlemen appeared, February, March, in addition to Chief Hanson, that the consensus of the commission was that we were going to budget for a study. So, I was a bit perplexed about whether or not it was in there. I thought it was, but when Commissioner Kane mentioned spending some of that money, okay, is it in there or not, and how much money do we have to spend? My recollection was the same as Commissioner McCurnan's, though, with respect to the additional position, that we thought we would wait to have the long-term study to evaluate the needs, not that we don't think we'd need them, but again, to do this orderly transition and implementation of what was needed. So, that was my recollection, and I'm glad that others believe that too. Okay. And, going back to the survey, I see this as one of the top five that was within the survey, police, fire, public safety. I see this all under that umbrella. So, as we look to use the survey results, this was certainly within the top five in all of our districts. It may have been three in one, and number one in one, and five in another, but it was all in the top five. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to say, I think the, I knew the study was in there, but I'm glad to see it, because we need to work on that immediately. The study is going to show us, I'm just going to guess, we need to spend some money to make it work. A juvenile facility will come with a price tag. Converting the current facility to an adult facility will come with a cost, a price tag. And so, we are going to need to be ready to spend some money when we receive these studies in. But I'm, the study is under, is on the books and ready to move forward. Well, it's not ready to move forward. It's funded. And there's a lot of work yet to get it to move forward. I couldn't agree more, Judge, with your assessment about our courthouse. One of the things that we have a responsibility as a community, as a community stewards, is when we talk about infrastructure, most people think of roads and sidewalks, which are critical infrastructure, sewers. I mean, we have a lot of infrastructure that we are responsible for. Our buildings are public infrastructure that we have to be stewards of, and we have, the last several years, certainly since the recession, have cut back on preventative maintenance and maintenance period. And getting our CMIP back, we're doing, Mr. Bach, what percentage are we doing that, we were doing X amount in 2006, and now we're doing a fraction of that. Can you give approximation?
Probably at about 20 to 25% of where we were at that time, which is really just maintenance.
That's right.
It's not doing anything to replace and build those new equipments.
So, if we've cut maintenance 75% since the recession, and done that over a series of years, the problems are growing, and my experience with water damage is it doesn't fix itself. It tends to exacerbate itself. So, I couldn't agree more. And the maintenance of our courthouse, there are few pieces of architecture like our courthouse in the state of Kansas. It's a beautiful building. It will be in our inventory forever. We have a whole fourth floor that's the old city, the old jail that's, is it fourth floor?
Fourth and fifth.
Fourth and fifth.
Fourth and all of fifth.
That are being unused and have a significant price tag to refurbish, but it's, it's facility that we ought to be using. And there was actually a preliminary plan looking forward about renovating the whole courthouse, and then when '08 and '09 hit, they just put them on the shelf. But I think that is a legitimate use of the public building commission to look at completely, and it would be probably better to do a, a justice center bond issue that included the courthouse, renovations to the jail, as well as a juvenile facility. I mean, if you package it together in a contract, I think you can do better overall in terms of getting a better price. But I think a comprehensive approach like that is going to be necessary. So, I couldn't agree more. The other piece is spending money to save money. We have a history of that. The sheriff has come to us before and said, additional staffing, I can double bunk, and we put in money for, for staffing and double bunking costs in order to drive down costs. And so, that's a step we've been willing to take in the past, and certainly a step I think we need to continue to take. If we have a chance to save $500,000, and it's going to cost us 250, the challenge is, how long does it take to get it into place before we start seeing the savings? You know, it takes time. It doesn't just, you don't, the savings don't just pop out. It takes time to get the system up and running, and I would expect it would take a year to 18 months to get that fully functioning to a point where it works. So, we would need to spend it upfront to get there. I think if we can find this one position to start diverting, the biggest savings we've had in our jails, diverting people out of it. I mean, that's the, that's the key. People that need to be locked up, the sheriff said this this morning at Livable Neighborhoods, people need to be locked up are locked up. People that can be diverted need to be diverted, whether it's for mental health issues, or for other house arrest programs, or whatever. The more creative we can be in how we approach this, the better. One of the requests I'd make, Mr. Gorman, that I had, I had mentioned Monday, would be, and I think your office, and obviously the sheriff's office works together on this, is to see, if you, if you would be willing to evaluate in your office if there's a way to do more video conferencing, or video arrangements. I know there are certain cases, as Mr. Walker pointed out, that you have to do it in person. Certainly understand that. Is there a way we could be a lot more aggressive with those to relieve the sheriff's budget? He's got about a $600,000 overtime on transport. If there's a way we could alleviate some of that, and there were, and if you saw a way that we could do that, there might be some savings that could come in, in 15, if you could work on that for a couple months and see what's there, that maybe would be able to come back to us on an amended 15 and say, we've identified some savings that we might be able to direct back into this house arrest and pre-trial money that could alleviate, because all of our budgets are separate, and all of them are the same, right? So, anyway, whatever, and obviously I'd defer to your expertise in that area, but whatever efforts could be made to be really aggressive about that, I think would be great.
I'll be willing to sit down with the sheriff and, and Judge Lamson, and we can start working on that.
That'd be great. That'd be great. And it may be that, that you'll come back and say, you know, we need some video equipment, which I don't know if they're giving away for free right now, Nebraska Furniture Mart, but there might be some cost, but I think if a business plan can be made, those are the kind of savings we need to really look after, so.
I might add to that, Mayor, is that Judge Lamson and I have already begun discussions on some other aspects of trying to get people out of the jail quicker, such as preliminary hearings at a quicker date, things like that, that might, they'll have a small effect on the jail population, but they'll have an effect.
Great. Well, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the teamwork. You three have worked together for a long time and trying to solve these persistent issues, and I appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
I know, I know you know where it is. You've got to. It's your budget and ours. Where does it show that we're, that we're going to be doing a study? Where's it showing the budget?
Well, it, it's identified in the, the studies are noted, one in my PowerPoint presentation, and then in the overview, it's built in within the sheriff's department, so you don't see it line item out.
Okay. Well, all right.
I, I've said this before collectively between the nine of us that are here, 10 of us with the mayor. A lot of, a lot of background, a lot of experience. A lot of, a lot of background, a lot of experience, a lot of knowledge. People appoint us to make decisions. I don't need a study to tell me that the three people who, I've known all of them for many years, that work with it every day, I don't need a guy from the outside to come in and tell me that we need this personnel to facilitate house arrest. I don't need to push this off until some guy goes through all the books, or a woman, goes through all, you know, does those various things. I, I am not a person who believes that in these types of decisions, I need a study to tell me what's right to do. Now, the study about how to separate minimal security and what kind of facility and additional jail space, how to build a jail, obviously, I don't know how to do that, but we do have an architect sitting here, who probably will bring much to the table on that, and, and help us in that regard. I, I feel like by pushing this off, if, if that's what I'm understanding we're gonna do, until sometime in mid-'15, again, we're not solving an immediate problem that could result in immediate savings. And, you know, I for one want, I mean, those three people know more about operating the jail than I suspect any of us sitting at this table, and probably as much as any outside expert can come in and tell us. So I don't, I don't want to delay that decision. I know I'm only one vote. If it were up to me, I would find a way to begin the process of adding the additional personnel.
I've, I've heard the sentiment from several people here, that there's an interest certainly in the one position. The proposal was for five, it was about a $250,000 item with a projected savings of 500,000, a net savings of 250, for practical purposes, $250,000 in additional personnel. But I think, can we get started? And that's the question, is can we get started? And is there a way to identify immediate savings in other areas that we could leverage back into these costs? Because I think the goal is, we would save money if we did it, so you have to spend it to get it, story of my life. So how would we go about doing that? And I think it's a legitimate, I think it's a legitimate proposal. I wanna, the question is, we could institute it in 2015, and may not see the savings until '16, and then we would have to carry it for this, during this budget year. So the question is, is that a priority we want to push forward? Is there other savings we can find? I think it's a legitimate question that's on the table, that I think we need to resolve tonight, about whether or not we're gonna direct the administrator to go back and look for this, and if we do, how much we're asking him to look for.
I'm gonna make a motion for the direction of that.
The 250,000?
Yes.
Okay. So we're, we have 250,000 on the table for 2015. Commissioner Townsend, do you have a comment?
Yeah, clarification. Did I understand, you said that the 250,000 would be for five positions?
If I could, I'd jump in. The five positions the mayor's talking about are up at the top there, Jerry, so I'd lighten them right there. Those, within 60 days, Mayor, we could have those people on board, and they would begin to have an impact. You would not have to wait until 2016 to, to realize that. We, that, you could start realizing some efficiencies right away. But the one position, the last one listed, the expediter, that the judge specifically highlighted, is, is key and critical to all of it. That one is like the person who's standing there juggling five balls in the air, and if you remove that person, all those balls are gonna hit the ground, and that's what, that's what'll happen in our criminal justice system. If, if something, heaven forbid, happened to Brenda Liker tomorrow, we would all be sort of scrambling around, trying to figure out where we go from there. So we'd really like to solidify that position, you know, with her, or getting an assistant for her, somebody to do the other stuff that she does, as the judge said, and then if we're gonna divert more from the jail, that's where the three house arrest surveillance officers come in, and the intensive supervision officer. That could help us divert those people right away. You wouldn't need to wait a year to start seeing the benefit of that. 60 days to get them up and running and going, and then, and then you start to see that benefit right, right then.
So conceivably, we could take $250,000 out of your farm-out costs now, and apply it to this, and you would at least make up that amount of money in 2015?
Conceivably, yes. Now, if the, if the numbers we're seeing, in terms of the average daily population, the numbers we've been experiencing in the recent trends, hold, yes. If for some reason that number goes up, then we, if we were able to divert a few more of them, yeah, we could probably hold that. If it goes up significantly, then there would, there would be an adjustment there. Likewise, if the numbers go down, then that results in even, even more savings.
So could we authorize, Mr. Bach, this question I guess is to you, could we simply authorize the sheriff to take 10 percent of his farm-out costs and apply to this new department in anticipation that he would realize the savings within one year? That even if he didn't get to the full 500,000, even if he got to 250,000, even if his estimate were off by 100 percent, he'd still break even? Is that a, is that authority we can give to the sheriff, that we'd say, yeah, we think that's gonna work, and, and instead of adding money to his budget, just allow him to allocate, give him budget authority or authority to hire more personnel to reduce his own costs? I would, that's a lot easier ask than asking us to find $250,000 of more money. I think this would be, the money, the two, two and a half million's already in the budget for farm-out, so if we just said, yeah, go hire, and gave you the authority to give, hire those people, then we would, it would at least be a wash.
To clarify, those are not my people. Any of those five currently are not my people, but Doug could speak to that with respect to the, how, how the mechanism would be.
Right. But, but the theory is the same thing. I mean, what you would be saying is, we would be removing quarter of a million from the farm-out budget, placing it within this department operations, and working from a perspective that they would be able to reduce the number of inmates, thus, those that are farmed out, by at least this amount of money. You know, I mean, when you budget it, you know, if we believe we can save $500,000 through this program, which is what I think you guys believe, then you're saying it's a conservative budget to say you could do it at 250. Like you said, it's not like they get hired, they've gotta figure it out, they've gotta start making a difference in the system, that's gonna take a few months, they're not, just gonna have, because that's an annual savings, so it would assume that in '16 we could ramp up over that, but in '15, well, conceivably, if you hit that number, you'd still get half of it, which would cover their cost, assuming that's where we're at from a salary perspective. But the theory is there, it's just that, I guess when you put it in the '15, if we're not achieving, and it'll be difficult when we go through the revised budget, by the time we're building our budget in June, to be able to say, we can see the trend line difference, because we will only have them fully ramped up probably for a month or two by June. But we can tell. I mean, maybe we'll be able to see, and you guys give an expert analysis on that, and if we are concerned, we may have to put a little bit more money back in the sheriff's farm-out budget, otherwise we look at it and say, we think we're on track.
Kane, and then Townsend.
Commissioner Townsend, go first, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, and I think Sheriff Asworth was getting to it, if the expediter or the juggler would have the most immediate impact, would you say the cost of that personnel addition would be one-fifth of the 250,000 that you would get for all five?
Well, you know, Commissioner, we didn't calculate that. I would expect that that person is gonna be a little higher, because the responsibility that we are going to put on that person is more than you'd see with just the people that go out and check to see that I'm in my house when I'm supposed to be. I mean, this person really needs to coordinate with a number of different places, but I don't know whether or not that means that the salary would be $10,000 more. I know Mr. Bach could probably address that maybe better than I. I don't know where that classification on the salary's gonna be.
Well, and that's fine, I just wanted to get some idea of whether or not all, these five would be more or less equal with regard to the money, because if that juggler made the most immediate impact, maybe that's the one we go for. But in light of this offset strategy, that might work at least up to the amount of savings we think we could achieve next year, you know, with the offset. So either one of those, if there could be some offset, again, with the allocation, you know, that might be better. Maybe we can only get the juggler next year, but it would be something down that road.
Mr. Gorman, and then Mr. Bach said he has another idea as well, and then we'll come to Kane.
And I, I wanna, I don't wanna change the subject, but I wanna add something else in there that we have not discussed yet, but Judge Lamson and I have discussed it. July 1, a new law took effect in Kansas, and it's going to have an effect on the jail population. I don't know which way, I'm afraid, negative. You know, we calculate regularly the average length of stay for an inmate, and it's now gone up to about 15 days, I believe, an inmate. It was 14 last year, it's gone up a day. That is directly affected by how long a case takes to get through the system. The legislature made a change on something that we refer to as speedy trial. Speedy trial says that if a person's not in custody, we have 180 days to take him to jury trial. The law has always, for, at least for my 33 years as a prosecutor, always been that if he's in custody, you have 90 days. That 90 days can be expanded, but the statutory time is 90 days, and we've done our best to get as many cases tried within, or pled within 90 days. July 1, the legislature expanded it from 90 to 150, which we don't, we've talked about it, Judge Lamson and I, what effect that may have, we don't know yet, but it could very easily have the effect that trials, instead of getting set within the 90 days, are gonna get set at 110, or 120, or 140 days, which means there's that many more days adding to that average length of stay.
May I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir.
The state changed their law from 90 to 150 days.
Yes, sir.
Is that one of those laws where Wyandotte County could have a, a law that says, we want to stay within the 90? The state allows up to 150, but we're gonna stay with 90?
Well, by practice, we could do that, do our best within it. The problem is that this determination of trial is a triangular or a three-legged approach. Judge Lamson, of course, holds the reins on that, and my attorneys are one leg in that, the defense attorneys are the third leg, and there's someone that's not at the table here, and if they come in and talk about the problems in their schedule, then obviously it's beyond my control, and it's something for the judges to decide. So that would be a wrench thrown into that. Yes, sir.
We're not, we, I think if your question goes, can we somehow home rule out of that, or no?
Well, not home rule, but sometimes the state, sometimes we can be more restrictive than the state allows. Or the state allows a parameter, and we can choose our range within it. Sometimes they say, it cannot be shorter than, and then we couldn't shorten it, but we could lengthen it. So my question is, if they put a maximum of 150, can we shorten it to 90?
We certainly could still try to keep it within the 90 in practice, like we always have. I mean, we could try to keep it within 10 days, which would be an impossibility, but...
I'm in favor of that.
If, if, we can certainly try to keep it within, and that's what we talked about, can we stay within those parameters? At some point, though, it may be impossible to stay within them. So I just raise it as a change in law. I know that you've all been very happy with the legislature and other changes they've made, so I bring this one up as another one that they've given us.
No comment. Mr. Bach?
Just for your consideration, as you're thinking about their proposal, and if that's something you're thinking about directing, particularly in lieu of the fact that we're looking at the offset on the farm-out cost, I would probably recommend, if you were to go that direction, that we not say, well, let's go for all five. I mean, because there's a, that's a bigger issue to say, less offset and make everything work. You know, it's kind of an incremental thing. If you get the expediter, and you had one of the additional surveillance officers, you know, there's a good chance that'll bring in at least their amount of salary, and plus more, and see how that works as a multiplier on what we're currently doing. And then if that works, then you could add more on, then we could add another one in the revised budget, and, you know, there's a limit, too. You know, our capacity, as we go through, hire, train, get good people on board, and get them all in, it would probably be quite a burden on this office to throw on five people in one shot, anyway. We wouldn't operate that way. So that, I think we could look at it more from that perspective and do the offset, and then it wouldn't be such a risk either, on the farm-out budget, when we start talking about $100,000 increment or something like that versus 250.
Kane, and then Philbrook.
Is that a form of motion, Doug? I think that's a, it's more livable, more easier to digest, and it would head in the direction that these folks want to go, anyway. And I, I think, I mean, I'd like to fund all of them, but I think if we start out with a couple, see where we're going, see if we're, we're getting ahead, and then adjust accordingly. If we get more, we get more bang for our buck, you know, and try that versus the, the five at one time. But I would encourage all the commissioners to go over to look at the jail upstairs. It would, it was quite spooky, and our architect, go over there and figure out a way to, to make that the juvenile spot. But, you know, there's a lot of, of area up there that we're not using, so a lot of times, we don't necessarily need to build a new building, we just need to fix up what we got. So that's kind of my thought. And the last thing is, is the Jeff Field, the jail administrator, I guess you call him a warden, got jail administrator of the year. So this guy's a thinker, and I think you guys have won four awards in a row. You know, so our, the sheriff and his group has done an outstanding job, and we don't hear about it, and I think we all should, you know, acknowledge that, but these three, and, and Hal's right, these three are the ones that do the work. Unfortunately, we're the ones that have to, to come up with the money. So I like the idea that Mr. Bach brought up about getting a couple, and then adjusting from there.
All right. Commissioner Philbrook.
So, gentlemen, if you were gonna have to pick the two positions or the three positions, what would you pick?
Well, the expediter, for sure, and I think probably one, intensive supervision officer.
That's where, that's where you'd like to start, if that's what we could do?
That'd be my thought. So there might be some debate on whether or not it be an intensive supervision or a house arrest officer, but...
Or maybe that person could do both, a little of both, or not?
Yes, could be cross-trained, and that person do both, but certainly the juggler or the expediter, or whatever name we want to put on, is the key one.
Well, I just wanted your opinion, since you guys know what you're doing.
Well, we spent a lot of time looking at it, Commissioner.
Yeah.
Whether or not we know what we're doing all the time, I'm not sure, but we spent a lot of time doing it.
I would like that we take that recommendation of those two employees.
Commissioner McCarron. Okay. So we had our, Mr. Walker wanted to go with the all five, 250,000. Are you still in that position?
Well, personally, yes, but clearly, others feel that unless, you get what you pay for in life, so if they want only three, I'll go with that.
All right. I've, several people have expressed an interest in a partial, so we'll just take a little straw poll here. If you would prefer to do all five now, just raise your hand up, and we'll just get an idea. If you would prefer to do an incremental approach, as Mr. Bach has suggested, raise your hand. Okay. If you'd prefer to do none of the above, anybody that doesn't want to do anything? Okay. So I think we have a consensus in direction. Mr. Bach, the sheriff has come in and asked to lower his budget. Let the record show. But I think that, I think it makes good sense, in terms of the cost, farm-out costs, and making that money up, so we appreciate that. So we have the, we've addressed this, we've addressed the juvenile study... We've addressed the juvenile study is under, is in the books. Now we just need to find money for the courthouse, and I, I think that's a long-term issue that we've got to get back on board with. So, anything else for this discussion? Commissioner McKeonan.
I'd like to follow up this discussion. Last October, Commissioner Markley and I suggested changing the timetable for, for the budget process and starting a little bit earlier. And we did that this year, and I think we've made a step in the right direction with trying to be more thoughtful and strategic before we start building the budget. It's my suggestion now that we add discussions like this, and like the mowing discussion we're going to have in a moment, also at that time, where we get these formal proposals on the table with enough time for Mr. Bach to look at multiple alternatives without the deadline hanging so tight over his head. And so I would just think that a lot of the presentations, both from these gentlemen as well as police and fire, that, you know, the typical ones that we get in, in budget season, in June and July, I'd just like to advocate that we move these forward so that we can put a proposal on the table and have time to consider multiple alternatives and maybe come up with a solution that none of us thought sitting at the table, but two weeks later, we get it, and it makes the most sense and it saves us the most money. So I just would like to suggest we consider further modifying our process to be more thoughtful and more strategic and more upfront in our thinking about that.
All right. I think this covers this topic. Thank you all for your work on this.
Thank you all.
And now we have, from one challenging topic to the next, parks and mowing. And I will say, we hear more from the public about parks and mowing than almost anything else. Please do. And I, yeah, and I think they do a heck of a job with the resources we've given them.
So I want to start this out by saying, gentlemen, you guys do a yeoman's job. I don't know how you handle what you do handle, and I really do want to appreciate the attention you pay to those folks that I drop right in your lap. And I really, it's, it's amazing what you can get done. I don't know, I don't know how you do it, and thank you for accomplishing that. That being said, now let's rake you over the coals.
Well, then let me start by saying, "Thank you." We'll get that out of the way. Mayor, Commissioner's staff, as you know, we mow a lot of territory. Something like, oh, 3,000-plus acres, 5,000-plus lots, 25 to 30 building areas, and about 26 miles of medians. We do this with contractors, and we do it with in-house people. Jack staff, the staff from Street Department, and the contract process, which is, has been centralized and run through Jack's department. And yes, you're right, Jack does a wonderful job of doing this because it is a tough, a tough animal. We, basically, we spent about $1.2 million on this, about $600,000 each way, in-house and with contractors. At the current time, on a daily basis, we have between 25 and 35 employees between parks and streets that are going out on somewhere between 20 to 25 mowers. The only trim people that we have, it's 10 or less, usually on a daily basis. For the most part, the contractor on the lots does do some trimming. This is one of the areas that has probably suffered the most as we've went through the budget crunch and the downsizing of the whole program. As you know, we came in here a couple of years ago when, when complaints reached the head as we cut staff and we cut budget, and we revised the program, we centralized reporting, we centralized the monitoring, we centralized the contracting. And with the 3-1-1 program, we've got most of that going. I think that you may notice that complaints are down, at least our poll of, of the various outlets where it comes in. That's what we were told. Still, though, there's more probably, not probably, there's more definitely that could be done in this area. The, in the past, before 2006, 2007, we had a summer program, and in the Street Department, there were about 20 to 25 bodies, and Jack's about 20 to 25 also. And basically, these were people that were handed trimming equipment, either mowers, shearers, or weed eaters, on a daily basis and put out. And we lost that when we did away with the summer programs. And the, the next slide that we will show you is one where we're just throwing some considerations at you as, as to what you want to consider maybe for this budget, for next year's budget, how the program moves for you. You know, it's, it's different in every district, and some districts have more weed problems than others. The, the, a number of complaints will vary, and therefore, I guess, the, the amount of interest that each commissioner has in it will vary. However, in an attempt to be responsive, we just wanted to list some stuff. If you gave us some help, summer kids, and that could be phased in, this is, these are costs based on past practice that would, would give us basically 13 weeks of 30 summer kids between the two departments. We would then equip them, which is a cost that's, that's in there. We also included a cost for an additional cycle of the contractors, and that's a contractor through, through, basically through the lots. One huge gap in this whole discussion that was here when we talked about it two years ago, and it's still the, the elephant in the room, is that this does not include the land bank lots. They are not part of this. When enough complaints are generated about a land bank lot, then we will, we will divert staff from some of these other functional areas and send them out to do that. And basically, that's, that's the response for that right now. Some of the land bank lots, of course, are not mowable at all.
And why is that?
Oh, they're, they're either, the terrain is such that you can't get men or equipment on them without getting them hurt. Contractors won't even bid them. Additionally, one thing I'd like to say is, we have added 11 miles of high-maintenance median to the 26-mile total that's here with the State Avenue projects. We did not add any staff or any equipment to take care of those.
Jack, is there anything you'd like to add? Can you go back one slide? Land bank lots at the bottom, responsible party, unfunded, 2,100 lots. I think that's the crux of it. And this doesn't include tax delinquent properties, or does this, or vacant lots? The code violations that we have to abate?
No, yes or no? The code violations are included in the stuff that we mow. There's, there's just a lot of...
Oh, the code violations up there is the Street Department?
Yes.
So we have 600 to 800 lots of code violations, 2,100 lots of land bank, and another 4,550 lots of UG-owned property.
On a regular basis, between the contractor and staff, we're mowing over 5,000 lots.
I think that's a big number. Markley and then Walker.
Okay. So in the past, we had a discussion, and we tried to do it, sort of. We, we paid some neighborhood groups to mow lots. I still think that's a fabulous idea. We have groups that do it anyway. Staff, I don't think really wanted to deal with that. So my next question is, is this something our volunteer program could deal with? And I know staff says, "Well, they'd have to use our equipment, yada, yada." We already have volunteers who are doing thankless jobs using our equipment. They're fabulous. We, we hear about them every year at that volunteer reception. So my question is, is this something where we could potentially seek volunteers to mow some of these lots? Because there, I know there are people that are voluntarily doing it anyway. They're just not logged through our volunteer system, and they're using their own equipment, but they're doing it all over the place. So I'm wondering if we could get help that way and add it into our volunteer program so that the people who are doing it know what lots are out there, what lots need mowed, what, you know, whether they're on a land bank lot or so they're sort of legal and not just mowing random pieces of land. Just be nice to see that whole thing more coordinated.
We have both of those going on right now. We have some neighborhood groups that are using our equipment and mowing, and we have some that are using their own equipment that we're reimbursing. It's, it's not a great number.
But it's not, I guess what I'm saying is, it's not coordinated in a way where if I were a retired lady and I wanted to mow some lots for the UG, I couldn't just come up here and say, "Hey, I'd like to be in your volunteer program and mow some lots. Tell me what to do," sort of, you know what I mean? Because I think there are some people out there who might be even more helpful to us if they felt like there was some way for them to get in on that program. Because other people see the problem, I think. Brian and I have talked about this a lot of times. They see the problem, they want to help. Just not everybody's as on top of it to jump right in and do it themselves without any coordination.
Commissioner Walker.
I know this is going to sound silly, but what is the cost to, I mean, what, I suppose there's legal implications. Why, why on some of these abandoned properties that we're gonna, that we're gonna cut, what would be wrong with putting an all-purpose herbicide on those lots and killing everything that grows on that lot for a year? That will cost you 28 bucks. It's not silly. I mean, it costs us how much to mow each time we mow?
Thirty-two dollars a lot.
And I can buy a bottle of Roundup and kill everything in my yard for 14 bucks, and I'm sure in the quantity we would buy it. I've always wondered why we don't use an all-purpose herbicide on some of these vagrant lots that are perennial problems and that we don't cut. Make, having it, having it all dead looks a lot better than having it overgrown.
Do you want to...
Is there, is there an answer?
Do you want to respond to that?
I'll wait for Mr. Roddy to respond to that. No, I, I, that's something that we've, I've really never looked into as part of this program. I'm not sure that that is too eco-friendly for Mr. Walker.
I want to hear Mr. Roddy's response to that.
I think, I think Roundup would tell you otherwise. I'm, okay, cut it off, forget it. Let's spend all the money we can on it.
Commissioner Townsend, and then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. I've asked the same question about that, so I'm interested in hearing the Roundup answer as well.
It took two to get him up. I tried, Walker tried, it took Townsend, so he likes Townsend best. I see how it is. Well, let's let him answer that real quick.
We have a series of stormwater laws that require vegetation on lots, so if we blanketed a lot and that became erosion problem, we'd be in violation of our own rules. And Roundup is only effective for the growth that you, is on there today. You kill the plant today, its little brother grows tomorrow. Sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so what if we kill everything and then we plant some kind of ground cover, like the crazy stuff that grows really fast? I'm just asking. I mean, we planted seeds in my yard and it took over my whole garden. It was fabulous. I'm just asking the question. And it doesn't get tall, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure there's many things we can do. However, you know, just the magnitude of what we got in front of us, you know, look at the size of those numbers. And, you know, think that we have some magical cure out there that replaces people with a lawnmower and a weed whacker. I, I think we're kidding ourselves.
Commissioner Townsend.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you do have a tremendous task. One of the reasons that I wanted to have this subject discussed, though, is to see if we could at least focus on some specific aspects of the weed issue. I understand the land bank lots, didn't realize until last year the cemeteries were part of it. But what I would like to see us focus on, I don't know if you need to add money, we need to add money to this, reallocate or what, is to see at least in our parks, which should be our diamonds, that when the lots are cut, the parks are cut, we get a finished job simultaneously. What I've observed, and many of the constituents that called me about this have observed, is that the park could be cut, but it's not a complete finished look because there is no finishing. You still have high weeds around the perimeters. So I'd like to know if our parks, for instance, in District 1, Parkwood, which is home to the only public pool in the county city, places like Edgerton, Garland, after the main portion of that is cut, what is the current process, other than just people calling, to get the look finished? If at least our parks looked complete and not a cut one day and another three weeks before it's hedged or mowed, it never looks finished. Parks and Rec was within the top five of our citizen survey. I would think it would be one of the least expensive things we could do to make even the more challenged parts of the city look better. I mean, this is, the, the parks belong to us, and as we move toward healthy communities and all that, it's one of the least expensive places for the citizens to go and take advantage of it. But if it doesn't look inviting, if it doesn't look kept, then people are not going to be inclined to use it, and it's going to become places where people are casual about dumping things and that type of thing. I do thank you for being responsive when I've called and trying to move with our rapidity. What I would like to see us move away from, though, is needing to call when it's done. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, do you want to respond?
Yes, I could.
Go ahead.
We agree with you. Unfortunately, with our staff size the way it is, we found that we can improve the amount of volume of work if we basically have our employees basically doing the rough cut, you know, for two days, and then they get off the tractor and then come back with the weed whacker. So you'll see that there's two steps that go involved, and they're days apart. So, but if we had, like Mike mentioned, if we had, you know, some additional resources that their sole purpose was the weed trimming, we would not have to use a two-step process that results in days for the whole process to be completed.
And I can understand days, but I've personally seen this go a matter of weeks, and you can tell that by the height of the weeds and the bush around the otherwise cut park, it's time for another cutting, and you still have the periphery that's unkept and unmowed. So if it was a couple of days, I could understand it, but are UG employees doing the cutting and who's doing the weeding? Is that by contract or our parks?
No, that would be UG employees also, and, and this doesn't just, what you're referring to, Commissioner, doesn't just apply to parks. It also applies to the right-of-way. If you'll notice along the guardrails and the bridges, even some of our parking lots, we're not, we're not caught up. They're not trimmed because we don't, we don't have enough bodies to put back in there. And those same people that are doing the mowing and try to do the trimming are the ones doing the patching. And like two weeks ago, when the storm came through, those same crews from, from Jack and from Streets have been out picking up limbs that, that have been scattered all over the county.
I understand. And, and like you said, this is a snapshot of a huge effort that you have to undertake for a particular time of the year specifically. But again, if we could just reallocate or reorganize and make sure that the, that the parks, if just the parks even, were completed, I think that would be a tremendous benefit to the way the city looks without adding, you know, a lot of money or any more money to the budget. So it would be a matter of prioritizing where we are, if nothing else but the parks.
Well, well, not to beat a dead horse, Commissioner, but the Park Department's always been the, the apartment that was cut whenever we got in budget trouble. I mean, since, I believe since '06, Jack staff's now 28... since '06, Jack staff's down 28 percent. Is that correct, Bob?
Yes.
We've, we've cut over 70 percent of the staff in the Parks Department since '06.
No, we, we've cut 28 percent FTEs, we've cut the summer program, and then we've cut the, the summer weed whackers.
So 28 percent reduction in overall staff and 100 percent reduction in summer help.
Correct.
So how much, again, would the weed whackers then add to our budget?
If you go back to the next, there it is.
Is that the $120,000 number?
Yes, it is. It's roughly nine to $10,000 a week at 30 of them. And that's that minimum wage.
And it's at least, and because they're contract and short-term, do they have benefits?
No, no.
It's just an hourly minimum wage, putting kids to work during the summer?
Right. It's not even a contract. They're sort of completely at our will. I mean, if, if the mowing season was over in six weeks, you could let them go, and that'd be that.
Okay. Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Twenty, 2,100 lots unfunded. Can you imagine 2,100 callers that live next door to those lots, or cut it in half, because those are the people that I hear? And I, and I want to say this, in my, in my three years of being elected in the urban core, this is the worst that the grass has ever looked. If, if anybody doubts me or questions whether I'm telling the truth, then I challenge them to drive through the community, street by street, and look at it. I wanted to know how much of the, how much of the grass cutting is contracted out? Is it 50 percent, 60 percent, or?
Roughly about 50 percent, Commissioner.
50 percent. Okay, thank you. And then I wanted to know, once that those jobs are contracted out, once the job is done, or they, or they observe?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Because that's been my biggest concern. I've watched contractors or city workers, whichever they be, cut the grass, and after they leave, it looks real rough. It, I don't know if it was too tall before they cut over it, but it's just kind of left looking any kind of way. Again, the weeds are left up on the fence, not hit with a weed eater, it's just, it just looks rough. And, and I want to say this, that if I drive past 50th Street, the grass doesn't look that way. And those same contractors and the same city workers are cutting that grass as well. And so I want to know about the alleyways. I've, I've looked at a few alleyways in the last couple of weeks, and all of them are just, I mean, grass is, is six and seven feet, I mean, the weeds or whatever it is. And so is that being maintained, or we just kind of let the alleys go, or?
No, the alleys fall under the Street Department, and we get to those when we finish with the streets and with the mowing on the lots. We, we work them in as we can, and again, they're the last priority.
Right. I can tell that, too. And then I want to know, is there a mapping strategic process bi-weekly or monthly in which, street by street, lot by lot, is checked to see if it needs to be redone, or does it just happen spontaneous? You get a call, grass is six feet, and then we go cut that lot? Or is there some kind of strategic process used for grass, for the grass cutting season?
Well, usually in the Street Department, they have a supervisor. He goes, each district has a supervisor that does that.
Okay, he does.
And the contractor, you have maps for your contractor?
For Park Social. Yeah, on, on the Park side, we, we have maps. All of our lots are cut by maps. And usually, the money we have, they, three times a year. It depends on, you know, the growing season, it extended this year tremendously, so we'll probably run out before the growing season starts, finishes.
Okay.
But, but there's a Park staff person that, that follows up that mapping program that checks those, as they're mowed.
But he still does his regular duties. That's just an added job to him due to budget restrictions.
Okay. Now, I'd like to know, as far as contractors, who would like to get contracts? I know a bunch of people who cut grass. If we just need contractors to line up, I can call a few of them and then tell them to call the Parks and Rec Department. Or have we maxed the funds to be able to, 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 to contract out, or where are we at?
When we hire a contractor, we follow the procurement code, you know, and we have, usually our contractors have multiple years, assuming they do an adequate job. But we don't, we do that at the beginning of the season before the grass starts growing. So the contractors, the few contractors that we have, because we'll have, you know, each, each contractor will have a massive amount of lots. There's not 1,000 contractors, there's probably a total of three operating.
Five.
Five. So, but each has one, a specific area that keeps them pretty well occupied. However, we do keep, we do replace the contractors, or we go out for bid probably at least once or twice a year, or year, we'll have new contractors coming up. So if you have someone that's interested, they certainly could call me or Jack or Mike, and we could tell them when a contract is up for a bid, or they can even just watch the purchasing in our website as to when bids are out.
Okay. And can you get the documents to me in which a neighborhood association would use to request lawn mowing equipment, or the reimbursement program that you spoke of? Can someone email that?
A simple email will do. There's really no document attached to that.
Okay, all right. And then the last thing I wanted to ask.
And that was, pardon me, Commissioner, but that would be to me, have them.
Okay, okay. And can we charge a reasonable fee to mortgage companies that hold foreclosed properties? If we drop by foreclosed properties, that grass is very high, and it's a push-pull factor, because the city is saying they're not obligated, and?
That's run through codes, and codes will attach a lien against that lot if we go in there and mow it. The, the, there's really, there's no difference between whether they're foreclosed on or, or whatever. If it's, if it's privately owned and it's not mowed and it's a violation, then it goes through that process.
Okay. Well, I do want to say this. I'd like to challenge staff or ask staff to be a little more tentative to the grass cutting that has already taken place in the community, because more than, than half of it, to me, when it's done, is a shabby job. And I don't know if that's the city workers or contractors, but if we're going to pay people to cut the grass, we at least should get our money's worth out of, out of the deal.
One item worth mentioning, Commissioner, as, when you think about that, is that if you look at the UG-owned lots, we have enough money to go out there and cut them three times a year. So every time we go out there, the, the grass is already probably 18 inches tall. And when you do that, it looks like a crummy job. And unless we have more money to do more cuttings, you're always probably going to have a product none of us are happy with.
Commissioner Kane.
Well, I guess I'm lucky since my district's west of 50th Street. But, one, I think you guys do a great job. And every time I've called, and I just had that situation next to my daughter's house last week about the grass being cut, I called the girls, they were out, the bank was out there the next day cutting the grass. You know, although, and, and even if you look at the golf course now, that's cut by all volunteers. You know, and, and one of the things that, that I, I thought worked really well for years and years and years, if we're paying $32 a lot, and we hire some kids during the summer, our kids, you know, to, to cut the grass, would, I guess my question is, would that offset some of the stuff that having the outside folks bid on it?
Not really, Commissioner. It would, it would really help address the, the concerns of several of the commissioners tonight. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't eliminate this, the lot thing like Bob referred to. I mean, going through them three times only, you get in there and the grass is, is high enough to where it's hard to do a real good job with it.
Well, I, I would, maybe it's a combination of both. Maybe we have the, the folks that bid in there, and then we hire, you know, 20, 30 kids during the summer, and then they're the ones that do the trimming or something. Maybe they could work somehow together so it doesn't look bad. And, and I've tried to cut grass with an 18 inches, it looks pretty bad when you're done. So you'd have to go over it two or three times just to make it look normal. So I'd, I'd like to see us maybe fund some summer help next year, you know, and that puts our kids to work.
In response to the summer help, just as a side note, you know, I think all of us are aware that there's a lot of young kids out there that are looking for a summer job that are not available. And when we hire summer kids, it's amazing how many of them start with the city as a summer kid, and then two years later, they're, they're back applying for a job, and five years later, they're a full-time employee. So these people are part of our community, and we're introducing them to a work ethic that is of value to the community. And we teach them training, and we, we hold them accountable to develop good work habits. So that has some value in what they do.
Kane and then Townsend. Townsend and then Kane.
Okay, thank you. Well, again, I think it falls to us as the commission to recommend, again, what Commissioner Kane has already brought up. It's our will to find some money to do this. Again, I appreciate that you gentlemen have been responsive whenever I've called, but we want to try to move away from having to call, especially on something like the parks. And if you can get a two-for-one benefit, as Commissioner Kane suggested, by hiring people in our community who are looking for jobs, who will get training, that's a benefit. So I would like to see us, I don't know what the amount is, I see the 120, that might not work, obviously, but something for next year to help alleviate the problem. The other cautionary aspect of this with the finishing work, some of this pertains to the peripheries around the park and some at other just street corners. I have noticed that there are places where our fire hydrants are actually being obscured. That comes, that's another safety issue. So again, this weed whacking and finishing is very important because we don't want our firemen not to be able to find a hydrant in a block because the weeds have obscured it. There are a couple that I'll be referring to you later, and if we can at least do that, I mean, that's very important. That's another downside to this that have, may not have been publicized. But I would just urge us to try to find some money. Again, this is top five in each of our districts. So I don't know what the number is, but something would be going in the right direction to help these gentlemen with what they say that efficiency is. Manpower needs money. Thank you.
Commissioner Kane.
Mr. Roddy, you hit a nail, the nail on the head. That's exactly what my son did. When he was 16, he went to the golf course, 16, 17. He's 18, he goes to Juco, hires on full-time. Six and a half years later, he becomes a fireman. And this goes into putting our kids to work, just like Bob said, because later, a lot of them want to come back and maybe not work at the golf course, but work somewhere else. So I think this is huge, that, that it gives the kids some sort of sense of pride, you know, and, and, you know, we're looking to fill some of these better jobs, you know, the police, fire, and the sheriffs. And what better way to have somebody, the work ethic that this place has produced? My son, I, I'm not a handyman, but they made my, my son a handyman out there at the golf course. So I think this is just another tool we can use that we haven't been able to use lately.
The other question I have, in addition to the summer jobs program, which I like and value, and I think having a summer jobs program generally is important for our community, I also wonder, not only do we have a lot of people in jail, but we have a lot of people who have community service that is assigned by the courts. And some folks, my experience is, some folks work hard to do their, get their community service worked out, and some don't work hard to get their community service worked out. But is there any way we could have, because I like that $45,000 number of equipment, is there a way we could have equipment available with shifts that we could have people who have community service assigned to a group that could work out their hours pushing our lawnmowers and running our hedge trimmers? From a volunteer perspective, we already have other volunteers doing it. There are folks who need community service, and if we had a program specifically targeted for that, theoretically, we'd get a lot of weeds cut with volunteer help.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we could do that. If, if the equipment's funded, we certainly could do that. Be happy to.
We can look into it. We don't know the particulars of, you know, what community, how many people are available, but certainly it's a good idea. We could certainly look into it, and we can respond back to you probably with, as soon as we get done talking to the sheriff or some of the other, other people over at the Community Corrections.
Well, I think that would be a great idea. If we could buy $50,000 worth of equipment, and, I mean, there are literally thousands of community service hours out there that are not, that are going undone. And I know, I mean, my church provides opportunities for community service. We have people come by all the time, want to do community service work, we give them a job. We have, we have a handful of people that do a heck of a job and work their tails off to get it worked out. We have some other folks who do less than a heck of a job and do some of the work, some of the time, and leave. But I think if we had a venue for, for that motivated group to get their community service behind them, I think we'd have a, I mean, that might be a good, a good program as well. I'd love for you all to look into that and see what the possibility is. Yes.
That sounds like an alternative worth exploring. My thought, as you said that, is even if we get the equipment, a steady committed stream of some, of workers to do that, I don't know if the group you suggested would meet those. I don't know if the gentleman who just preceded this group, Judge Lamson, and that group would have to sign off on it, or do you have to vet certain things that would qualify as community service?
Yeah, and I wouldn't want to suggest a work release program out of the jail where we're taking inmates out who need to be supervised out. The, the, the cost associated with that, we don't need a county mountie on a horse with a rifle walking along the streets. I've seen that in Texas, and I'm not sure we want to implement that here. But if we have people who are out of jail who have community service, I think there's a, a potential there. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. And I, I totally support what Commissioner Kane said with bringing young people in from the community and allowing them to work and make a little money for the summer. And I, and I don't want to offset it with individuals who may, may choose community service, because, I mean, I'll be honest with you, if you tell a person they're going to go out in the 90-degree weather and, and, and cut grass, and that's how they're going to get their community service cut, they're going to choose to go to one of those other places where they can get community service. And so I just, it seems like a more firm approach to allow children who are trying to make money for the, you know, for the summer in their community. And then also the possibility of people for community service. But I, I would, I would hate for us to back it on people doing community service, and we spend $45,000 on equipment, and then we get five people to volunteer next summer for community service.
Just an anecdote, my grandpa always kept his tools, his shovels and his hoes and his weed eaters on the outside of the garage, hung up to make room inside the garage. And I say, "Grandpa, aren't you concerned about people stealing that?" He said, "No, those are working tools. People who want to steal don't want to work with those." All right. So we have some options. Commissioner, Administrator Bach, do you have any ideas on this?
Probably in hearing a lot of good ideas toward this, it sounds like everything kind of comes back to some form of funding, and I guess it's what would be the priority. I, probably from what I'm hearing, is there's a, a lot of more emphasis maybe toward the parks. I mean, we have a lot of lots, as they showed on the other pages, and, but if we put a focus toward maybe the park areas at one time, going toward the summer programs, which if I look at the other sheet, maybe if we go back and we kind of formulate maybe a proposal to bring back, that's not all of the summer kids and programs that they've recommended up on the, on the next slide between streets and parks, but we look at more of a focused effort, sort of certain things, and then a portion of that cost. I guess what I'm looking at is, I know this commission has already identified a way to reduce about $45,000 from this year's budget. We'd be looking at, and that's scattered across a few different funds, but parks is really between city and county because we have the consolidated Parks Fund. Maybe we try to find a number within the parks budget, you know, we'd be throwing that money to the bottom- You know, we'd be throwing that money to the bottom line, but then we'd be putting this back in the 2015 budget, um, as a way to go after and try to target a summer program with a focus, this wouldn't be toward all lots, but maybe toward a focus towards some to make those look, as Commissioner said, our jewel of our parks, look that much better. And we could work on something like that to bring back. If that's what I'm hearing.
Does this, uh, group have a consensus that that's the direction we'd like the administrator to take?
Can I just restate what he said in my words to make sure I'm getting it?
You may.
You're going to take the survey money and use it to mow. Okay. Yes, that's good. Just wanted to make sure I was on the same page.
Problem solved.
And just to note, the, the consideration is two-hundred-and-fifty, and that survey is fifty. So it's about twenty percent of the recommendation, but it's something.
But it'd be about ten kids if, if thirty kids is a hundred-and-twenty, forty thousand would be ten kids roughly.
That's right. All right. Anything else for this, um, mowing?
One, one last note. I've heard talk about the summer program, but that's how I started here too, so I just thought I'd end with that.
That might be a warning and not a consideration.
Sometimes a program works, sometimes it doesn't.
Thank you.
All right. We now have corrected budget documents. Yeah, I'll let...
This is a normal process, I guess, if we go through each year, as we put together a rather big book. As we get into it, um, we go through, and we find there are little editorial changes. Um, they're not necessarily changes that change our bottom line there, but they may be a significant financial change on that page because it just doesn't rule upright or it didn't count right. And that's what Mr. Lindsey is here today to, to step through, um, pages. And I believe each one of you were giving, given a document for this that has the actual page, or you're getting that now. Those are the pages that could go into your budget book, um, to replace the page, so it is the accurate one that would be, assuming we adopt that page as presented, what would be the correct one. And you also received an electronic copy of this. Mr. Lindsey?
The pages that were corrected in your budget document were in the financial overview. Uh, one of the ones replaced was the street and highway fund. Uh, we had a expenditure classification where the reserves replaced up into another line item, so we moved the reserve down into the reserve line item. It didn't change the balance of the fund or anything, we just moved the expenditure around. Also, in the revenue detail by fund, we moved, uh, some of the revenue detail around, which was related to...
I, just a question, are these all editorial in nature? Are there any, um, changes that changed bottom lines or significantly?
Not significantly, but there are, there are some bottom lines that changed. Uh, and those would be, in the police department, we changed around a capital project, which was their cash system, which is in their special law enforcement trust fund. So that was updated, and it did, it did update their bottom line.
Let me ask for the will of the commission. Would you like Mr. Lindsey to walk us through one by one each of these corrections, or would you like to receive the report?
We already have the report.
I mean, would you just receive it and?
Yes.
Move on?
Move on, move on.
Nothing personal, Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you.
Your work here is complete. Thank you. I just looked, we have a four-hundred-and-seven-page document, and if these are all the corrections, I'd say that's a pretty good job. So, thank you, excellent work on this budget.
Thank you.
It's in, it's a mammoth undertaking. All right. Budget action items.
The next pages really just get into the, Reggie, can you advance it? I think you have the thing. The action items, when this budget comes before you next week, this is just kind of a precursor as to the different actions you'll be taking. We do several different things in adopting the budget. Um, and we've sent you an electronic copy of samples of these documents as well, so you'll see, and any finalizations we'll make to them. But, you know, so there are a series of resolutions. You can see the, um, first one listed up here is regarding community development. So we go through, we take that action, it is, we adopt that as part of our budget. Um, and then we'll go through a couple of the series of different things. We have to set out our gross revenues to be set over by the, uh, Board of Public Utilities, so that just gets into the discussion of, it, it's a communication we have with the BPU each year based on the budget. We didn't make, recommend any changes from what we'd had in previous years to this amount. But that's a communication you're approving as part of this document. A resolution, regulation establishing the, uh, rate for the sewer service charges effective January one, 2015. This is one that I noted that when I presented my, or it's in my, my summary pages of the budget, where we will have a seven cent, or seven percent increase for a sewer system. An ordinance establishing the solid waste fee, so the collection in this year's budget notes in the summary documents that we're, that'll change by fifteen cents a month for homeowners. I still would say that's a very good value for everything that can be put at the curb. Um, we have a CPI index factor with, uh, Deffenbach, and that's what it factored out to be this year. We'll have a resolution that's submitted to us by the library board. Lou, do we know what the library board, have they submitted to us yet what they're anticipating for a mill rate increase?
Constant.
Constant. So they're keeping their, uh, mill rate level, um, coming into this year. Uh, we have an ordinance on the, uh, from the SMID district, so they'll submit over, and I believe they are recommending the same mill rate as well, if I recall what I've seen in the notes that's coming from that organization. And then we have a, the resolution, which really is the adoption of our budget, which sets out the, uh, what our tax, taxes will be and the maximum amount that we're going to are the, our expend rate for next year. So that's the mill rates for the city and the, the county is what it's set out there. Well, I mean, those are two different actions, but that's what that covers. Lou, you stepped up to the microphone, so did I. Missed something or covered something different?
No.
I, I also added this note, this will not be there, but I have that in my summary, and I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Uh, I mean, there's no action that needs to be taken by the governing body, but my budget has not recommended the continuation of the waiver of the building permit fees and sanitary sewer system fees for new single-family residential as we move into 2015. So that's, uh, when that was adopted by the commission, it had a sunset period on it. Um, that sunset comes in, and I did not, we built in the revenue from that, we didn't build it in as it's going away.
How, um, do we have an idea of how successful that program was in terms of stimulating new, new family starts in our existing subdivisions? Commissioner Kane?
They, they're, they're tearing them up out by my house. I mean, they've got, we went from no builds in four or five years to, just on my block alone, uh, there's two sold, they're digging the lot next to, uh, Greg's house now, but I mean, it's, there's at least fifteen brand-new homes in, in our addition. You know, and, and if you look at some of the other dishes, uh, Newberry out there, one-hundred-and-twenty-third and Leavenworth Road, that's exploding, you know? So I think it's worked. I would like to keep the other thing going, because that might have been why it was working, but I'm just one person.
Commissioner Markley?
I was just going to say, it's just so hard to know whether those things would have happened anyway because of the upturn in the economy generally, or if it was related to this. And there's no way to know if they would have started building regardless.
Okay. All right. That walks us through, these are, so we will take seven different votes a week from tonight to adopt our budget, is that right?
Yeah, it's seven, two votes, I believe. We have a resolution and an ordinance, Ms. Bodie?
No, that's one document.
One item, okay.
But because it's a county, uh, legislation, and so you...
Yes, Mayor, seven.
So it's always helpful to know what votes we're actually going to take, because sometimes we say we're going to adopt a budget, then you have seven things to adopt, and people say, "Wait a minute." But that's the process we need to go through in which to adopt. Commissioner Walters?
Uh, just a quick question. So how much additional revenue are we going to realize in 2015 based on, on this, uh, sunsetting of this requirement? I didn't see Mr. Roddy have stepped out, and I believe we built in about a hundred thousand dollars in regard to that?
Thank you.
We did that based on the, the numbers of houses that were coming on, and then looked at previous years.
Any other questions or comments? Topics for future budget sessions, we have two scheduled. We can schedule more if necessary. Next week, on Monday, the twenty-eighth, final public hearing. So anyone in the public who would like to come, uh, they're invited to sign up, and will be given, um, three minutes to, um, make a comments about the budget as they would like. And then we will have a budget workshop that will include a public safety follow-up, as well as a discussion of the BPU revenue. And a presentation on that. Now, those are the, those are the only topics that we have outstanding from the commission. We have a budget workshop tentatively scheduled at five o'clock on Thursday, the thirty-first. If we have no further topics, uh, we won't hold that. But are there any other topics from any of the commissioners, or things you would like to make sure that are discussed that we can do either on the twenty-eighth or the thirty-first? All right. I think, um, and I will say this, this is my eighth budget. Kane, it's your tenth? This is the smoothest in terms of the pre-work that has been done to get us to this point of any that I've seen. And again, uh, I think it was McKernan and Markley who came up with the new budget calendar. The commission considered it in October and decided we wanted to do it differently. And I think the fruit of that effort, um, is being seen now, because we've had a lot of extensive conversations throughout the year. And considering it is one of the most important things we do, I think, Commissioner Walker, you mentioned that before, it's one of the most important things we do, that, um, we've taken good time to take our, to walk it through. I also, um, so I think we're on track. So if there is something that occurs to you, if you go to sleep tonight, you say, "Wait a minute," uh, you don't need to call me right then. Though I do have voicemails, so you're welcome to, but, um, let, let my office know, or let Doug's office know, and we'll get it on the calendar. We'll make sure that the staff, the sooner the better, so we can give staff ample time to, um, to prepare. We are adjourned, and in twenty minutes, we will have our seven o'clock commission meeting.